Okay, like to call this planning and zoning meeting for East Granby on January 15th. 14th, 2024, for the order. Tonight, we have regular members, myself, Tom Herling, David Bissard, Brian O'Connor, John Welsh, and Todd Zisson. We have alternates, Brian Kleiman and Austin Galinas. So the first order for tonight is to continue the public hearing for application 2414 for Pamela and Russell Martin, Ten Hill Crest Drive. And that meeting, that public hearing is already open, right? So we don't need a motion for that. So if you have any new information or...
I do, actually.
Okay. Sure. Yep. You can just state your name and go to town.
From another meeting. I didn't realize I was going to a meeting. So bad breath.
It's okay.
Need to run through it so we get our... Okay.
Take your time. Just hurry up.
Pamela Martin, Ten Hill Crest Drive, East Grand Bay, Connecticut. So, since we last met, I want to tell you how disappointed I am in our town planner and with Mark and everybody because after we met last month, we were supposed to, we were here to get a permit because Mark said we needed that permit. Then we had this meeting here and Robin said, "No, we need to get the other thing first, the COO before you could even vote out a permit."
Okay.
So then when I left here, I went back and watched the thing and you guys said that I had to wait for Mark was going to get in touch with me about the COO. Well, after a week, I didn't hear from anybody. So I called in and Mark said that Robin was wrong, that it had to be done the other way around, that we had to vote out a permit first before he could even do his job. So I guess the reason I'm really mad is because I had to get all the information to you guys 24 hours prior to November's meeting. December, we come in, we have the wrong information. If I, if I took the time to get all that information in so that you would have it for a December meeting, why didn't you guys have all the information? Why didn't Robin provide you with the right information? Why didn't she and Mark talk about it? Why didn't you know who complained and why there was a complaint about the permit? So here we are in December. I come in here. You guys have no information. I don't know if anybody did their homework. Robin didn't do her homework. Mark's unavailable by phone. Just to find out the next day, he says Robin was wrong and we had to come back this month and do it over again, what we should have accomplished in December. I've lost $5,000 or $6,000 because of this. And I found out the reason I'm even here, you guys have no clear guidelines as to what it is about Airbnb. So how am I supposed to know what I'm supposed to deal with? You guys don't know. Explain it to me. Because you guys didn't know what you needed to know. I don't know what I need to know. Audrey doesn't know what she needs to know. And we're applying for a permit and nobody has any information. So guess what else I found out? I found out the reason I'm here in the first place, the reason Audrey's here in the first place, is because of my neighbor next door complaining. Why did he complain? Because Mark was at my house reviewing the work I was having done and he saw the guy next door didn't have a permit for his roof. He went over and gave him a hard time. My neighbor got mad at me and called in a complaint to see if I had a permit. So I'm here because I'm an addictive neighbor because Mark did something. So when Mark got a complaint against me, I feel like probably opened up a whole can of worms and he brought in Audrey and the other guy.
I don't know what to say.
Why wasn't even Mark here last month? Why was he unavailable? He said he forgot his phone network.
Why isn't he here this evening?
I don't think he's normally here.
Okay. I'm just saying, he's the one that knew all the information. Robin should have gotten it from him before the meeting. Why did I supply information in November if nobody does any homework between November and December's meetings? $6,000 dollars I lost because people don't talk. They work in the same office in the same building. So here I am. What are we going to do tonight?
Well, I think it's...
Is that Robin, excuse me, is that Robin on the screen up there?
You're talking to her. She's there. You're talking to her.
I mean, how would you feel?
I can appreciate that. But I think that, I think everything's going to get settled tonight.
What do you mean by settled? I mean, I'm going to get a permit, but then he's still got to come out, right? He didn't even call me to tell me that he wrote letters to you guys saying that Robin was wrong. She's in charge. Shouldn't she know?
I'm going to chime in just so we're clear on something.
Yeah.
No, we have the volume here. This is all the way up.
You guys have the volume there.
Yep.
We've got the TV volume right here.
I even had somebody contact me because they want to come out from the house.
Robin, go ahead.
But I had to say no.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay. So the issue of the CO was raised by one of the commission members at the December meeting. I said I didn't have anything in the record about whether or not your apartment was CO'd. And that's what started this question. When we went back and talked to Mark, Mark's memo to the board tonight actually isn't about a CO for the apartment. And I wasn't wrong. His point was, in order for him to sign off on your Airbnb, your use for building, he's correct. You need a special permit. There are two separate COs that we were talking about, and that's where the confusion in this conversation lies. So for that, I apologize, but that wasn't part of what we were talking about in December. Two different things.
Well, how am I supposed to know that? I mean, all I know is there's no...
I understand and I appreciate that, but I just want to make sure that you understand what we talked about at the board meeting in December is not what Mark was referencing in his memo or referenced in his memo tonight to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I had raised the issue. Robin, you're 100% correct. I had raised the issue and you had stated that 10 years ago, and you had purchased the house and there was, in the basement, however long ago, that there was in fact in the basement, finished area. And then you had indicated that for the past 10 years, you've been using that for Airbnb purposes, originally with a family friend, and then warped into Airbnb. My question was exactly as Robin just stated. It had nothing to do with what has occurred in the past 20 years. It's whether or not 20 years ago, there was an issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the basement in your house. That's all I had asked for. That's what needed to happen. You can retroactively, and I don't know how, you know, I don't know at what point, Robin, you can actually say that it's grandfathered in and we can't go back after it. But when you're looking at something that's been used for commercial purposes, Airbnb, and you need to know whether or not there was a certificate of occupancy for that space that was issued by the town of East Granby. That was my whole objection to it. And that's why I had asked that we had tabled this so we could find out whether or not there was for the original construction of the space that we're looking at. And then Mark's right because there is requirement, and I agree, it's not necessarily a CO, but it's a CO because it's a special permit issue for quote unquote tourist home. We don't call it Airbnb. We don't call it accessory use. It is a quote unquote tourist home. Robin cites in the letter to us that we'll get to in a little while with the actual regulation. It's pretty straightforward. It's, you know, you don't have to jump through hoops for it. But my concern was whether or not the construction of the basement 20 years ago was done with a certificate of occupancy. And I was told it was not. So that's step one, the way I looked at it. And, you know, want to blame me for pushing it a monkey. But I don't, I still don't believe.
Well, I guess I have a problem with the fact that there was no communication between Mark and Robin in the beginning to find out what exactly he wanted. We would have solved that whole thing.
There was, there was communication. The issue wasn't raised until the December Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, which Mark does not attend. And directly after that meeting, I had a conversation with Mark, who then wrote up this memorandum for the commission members to be made part of the record for this meeting.
So any Airbnb people will be informed and you'll know what you're doing from now on? I mean, we have, we have standards of the way it has to be handled from now on for Airbnbs or what?
It's not, it's not about zoning.
This isn't the first time, yeah, this isn't the first time that this is...
Yeah, I mean, it's called, in our regulations, it's called a tourist home.
It's not the first time that we've done this. It's the first time we've done it where the space that's being used for that purpose was constructed without a building permit.
Okay, because nobody had any answers. They couldn't even remember where the last, the other Airbnb is.
It's on Tonsus Avenue.
On Tonsus Avenue.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I recuse myself because they were clients of mine. I know it quite well.
Okay.
That was at least seven years ago.
At least, yeah.
It might have been 10 years ago.
Yeah, I just saw when there's another...
There's plenty of them. There's plenty of them that popped up around town, especially during COVID. I, you know, and we, you know, we're not zoning enforcement. We're planning and zoning. Our zoning enforcement, though, for whatever reason, wasn't looking to stomp on people for, for doing that.
Right.
There was also, oh, I don't need to get into any of that. But during, but during COVID, there was a lot of that popping up all around.
Yeah, there's a few of them.
And then people would, people would rat out their neighbors. And then they'd get, and then they'd get a letter. Then they'd get a letter from the zoning enforcement officer and presumably they stopped.
Or they would...
But that's not what we do. You're not enforcement.
Or they would get inspection.
Or they would...
Get inspection. And a lot of times, a lot of these people just started doing it. They would apply, but they didn't go necessarily through the proper channels and get an inspection to see that, yeah, it's safe for somebody to stay here.
I understand inspections. I just don't understand the lack of communication and why it's the third month I'm here and people been disappointed and obviously the income hurts. So any other questions or anything? So we have it all straight now?
Yes.
Nothing you need from me?
Uh, nope. The application letter.
Yeah.
Oh, the, from Mark?
No. Robin, you did a review letter, correct?
Yeah.
For this application?
It was given to you guys at your December meeting.
Right.
Do you want me to briefly go through it?
Why don't you, yeah, in light of what's transpired between December 10th and the date of your letter and where we're at tonight?
Right, because one of your concerns was what was the problem with my Airbnb, right?
I'm a problem?
No, 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 no. One of your concerns, your question is that you would ask at the last meeting is why, who complained and why they complained? If there was a problem with me having an Airbnb?
If you meet, if you meet the standards of the regulation for a tourist home, it doesn't, doesn't matter. It doesn't matter who complained, doesn't, or what their, their issue was, except if you don't have the special permit for the tourist home, then as a neighbor, yeah, I probably, you know.
Would you?
No, but I wouldn't.
I wouldn't.
But one, one...
To me, it's your business.
Let me, let me rephrase that. One light. One light.
Right, especially when they think you called the town of them about their roof.
You never know. You never know what motivates to have people do whatever they do. Yes.
Yep.
Did you want to review that or, or no?
Yeah, I won't read it verbatim, but I'll just recap since it is a special permit and you guys do have a special permit considerations. I think we had started going through them at the last meeting, so I'll be super brief. Obviously, there really is no standard other than you cannot have more than four transient persons renting the home at one time. I did go through the special permit consideration, suitability of location. Obviously, this property is zoned R30 and is surrounded by R30 zoned properties. Suitable structure. It is a residential home with an apartment in the basement that's being utilized for this space and for this use. Neighborhood compatibility. Obviously, it's owned residential, so it is compatible with the neighborhood. It has suitable access and parking. We went over that at the previous meeting. She explained the parking, where there's a room for at least one additional car for the potential renters. Suitable streets. This is on a public road and it's associated with the property, so there shouldn't be any issues with traffic. Adequate emergency access. Again, public roads and access to the structure already there. It has public utilities. There are no noted concerns as the use is interior to the structure and obviously will have a certificate of occupancy by our building official. It is consistent with the POCD in that we are trying to grow our number of home occupations, which this could be considered. And so I did draft a motion for the commission, if they wish to approve this, with just a condition that no more than four people may occupy the rental at one time.
Thanks. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak for or against the application, since this is a public hearing? None being seen? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make an app.
I'll move to close the public hearing on application 2414 for special permit for tourist home for the Martins' property at Ten Hill Crest Drive.
I'll second that. And before we open, we're, the next public hearing for applications 2415, Audrey Thompson, Newgate Road, read the public notice, public hearing, legal notice, Granby Planning and Zoning Commission. East Granby Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 14th, 2024, 7:00 PM, in the East Granby Town Hall Hearing Room, 9 Center Street, East Granby, via Zoom concerning application 2414 Pamela Russell Martin, Ten Hill Crest Drive, special permit for tourist home, and application 2415 Audrey Thompson, Newgate Road, for special permit for, for these applications we filed and may be seen in the website of the official building department. And can I get a motion to open this public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open it up for the application 2415.
I'll second that.
Okay. Audrey? Yep, yeah, you can go right here. Just state your name and where you live and jump right into anything you want to tell us.
I sent two pieces of information, an initial application with information that I thought that we wanted. And then I sent a follow-up when I read the minutes of this last meeting. It had additional information about the property size and how much footage along the road and parking and that. Do you have all of that?
Yes. Yes, very well documented.
Um, so I've been doing this for a while, not really aware that I had to put in an application. I apologize for that. I did see the thing about four people in your, in the zone speculation, so I've never had more than four. And I saw the other item that said you, you've had to be present in the house, and I'm always present in the house. I don't know what the town's concerns may be going forward with the Airbnbs, but for mine, I do a couple of things in addition to the regular Airbnb to ensure that I get really nice people. I require a face-to-face check-in so that, you know, they can't bring their party people, although I don't know who would want to party in Grandma's house. But, and I, I don't allow dogs, so I'm glad if someone else allows dogs because if people are very disappointed in that. And I go out visually, it has to be in-person check-in. So I go out and visually look and if they said it's, you know, my mom and dad coming, I go out and make sure that's who's there. So, so I've never gotten anybody that was an imposter or something, which you sometimes hear about in Airbnb. And for the most part, people have been very good. Sometimes a little noisy and inconsiderate, but my kids are too. So, so I really do appreciate you, your volunteer work with these things. I used to be a similar kind of town board. And, and I hope that going forward, people maybe will understand a little better about what they should be putting forward because I, you know, I'm fairly, fairly careful about these things. And somehow I didn't see it. So maybe it'd be helpful to have some more written guidelines. Any questions about the space or my application?
Just have a couple. I'm just, I'm looking at the floor plan. So I assume you're, you're downstairs.
Yeah.
And then the access to the Airbnb...
Is my main front door.
Is the main front door. Okay. So it's in the door, a little foyer there, up the stairs. I mean, it's not a requirement, but there's no separate separation between, but you don't allow access to your floor and your, and your living space.
Yeah, I mean, obviously someone had an emergency, but, you know, I really just just thought this thing.
Right, right. And, okay. And there's no like, I'm sorry, there's no like shared kitchen or anything of that nature. So they're bringing, they're dining out or they're bringing their food in. Okay.
Anybody else in the public?
So in the process, going forward, then, my little idea could be, and is there anything else that you could do?
Um, if everything gets approved, then you'll have a special permit assigned to the property. And then I think it's 15 days before the special permission effect?
So the appeal period after the legal notice is 15 days. We give you a decision letter with a special permit form. You have to actually file the special permit form on the land records for it to be effective. So those will be the two things you'll need to do afterwards. And we explain that in our letter that we'll send out.
Okay, thanks.
Tom, do you want me to go through my memorandum?
Um, if you want to go through it just real quick on this application?
Yep.
Am I supposed to have one?
Um, I don't think so. I think that was, this was something that she writes to the commission members.
Um, so I'll just go over your special permit considerations. So again, suitable location. Actually, this property is zoned agricultural, which we treat as residential. It's surrounded by R40 agricultural and PRD zoned properties, so all residential properties. It is a single-family structure with a proposed second-floor bedrooms being used. Again, neighborhood compatibility. It's zoned agricultural. It's surrounded by residential. Parking would be in the driveway. It's a fairly large lot with a longer driveway into the, the structure. Suitable streets. As the limit on the number of people allowed to rent is only four persons, it assumed one car would be the most traffic using public roads associated with the property. It should not pose any issues. There is adequate emergency access and public utilities. There's no noted concerns on environmental protection and conservation. And as noted, it is consistent with the purpose of the plan of conservation and development. Staff did prepare a approval motion if the commission wishes to approve with the same condition as the other one, that no more than four people may occupy the rental at one time, consistent with the regulations.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, there's no other comments?
I'll move to close the public hearing on application 24-15 to a self-propelled property at 129 Newgate Road. Ms. Thompson?
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Okay.
All right. Opposed? Ventions? Moving down to agenda item three, is there any public comment on any non agenda items that anybody might have? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I can make a motion to approve the minutes for December 10th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
I'll second that. Anybody see any problems with it? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Ventions? All right. So moving down to communications, we did get the letter from Mark about the Airbnb requirements. Do you want me to read that into the record?
No, you don't need to read that into the record. He did do an actual report for you guys about, I think, two new violations. Should have been in your box.
Ooh, I don't know if I had that. Okay.
That's the other one.
Okay. So we have, are we just review them?
It's just for your communications from the zoning officer.
Yeah, these are ones that we were just discussing. So, okay. I think that that was it. I didn't have any other communications.
Questions? With those violations, does anything to do with our property or her property?
Uh, yes, it was, yeah, it was Nine Hill Crest Drive for shipping container placed in the front yard. Notice of violation was mailed on November 13th, follow-up on 12:30. Spoke with the property owner about alternative measures of moving and concealing the shipping container. It was on your drop, it was on your road, but not...
Yeah, that's a prostitute.
But not your house. And then he just had Ten Hill Crest Drive, B&amp;B site visit and approval of site, 129 Newgate B&amp;B, no more contact since first contact.
It's nothing that we can worry about?
No.
So I think, once again, I'm definitely here happy with what you're saying. Are we all set for that?
Uh, you're going to be in a minute.
Okay. I know you guys are all chattering up there, but I didn't like it.
Okay. It's just, it's just the, the meeting mumbo jumbo. So that was about zoning enforcement, planner report, anything?
Yeah, just two items for you. A reminder that the first Monday in February, which I believe is the third, will be the kickoff meeting for your POCD. So Tyke will be there to give a presentation so everyone knows what the POCD is about and to talk about content and how you want to move forward, strategies for reaching out to other boards and commissions. And then I don't know if Michelle sent it out today, but if not, it will be sent out shortly. The Connecticut Bar Association Training, which was affectionately known as the Wesleyan Training, is happening this year. It is via Zoom, so it is not in person. They've been doing it Zoom for the last, I think, three go-arounds.
22nd or something like that?
Uh, yeah, it's in March. It's a full Saturday. It's well worth the time if you have to sit through it. It covers pretty much anything land use related that you can think of. So if anyone is interested in attending that, just let Michelle know. We'll get you guys signed up.
Well, butter my popcorn for that one.
That's all I have for you.
Okay. Austin, any CROG?
No, but their next meeting is on March 6th, so I'll be...
Oh, okay. All right.
Oh, and, and actually, I will, one thing, because it's sort of CROG related, I was specifically reached out to by CROG to sit on a warehouse study committee that will be kicking off in February as a point of contact for East Granby, since we're one of the communities that there's interest in doing warehouses in. So... So, as that committee moves forward, I will keep you guys apprised of what we talked about and what they're looking into.
Well, that's exciting. Congratulations, good for you.
Yeah, super exciting.
Butter your popcorn, too. Okay, that brings us down to old business, which there appears to be none of. So, new business. Can I get a motion to approve application 2414, Pamela Russell Martin, Hillcrest Drive?
Make a motion to approve application 24-25 for a tourist home located on property-
14.
14, sorry, 14 I said, 2414. For a tourist home located on property at 10 Hillcrest Road, East Granby, in the R30 zoning district in accordance with section 4A5G, and a special permit consideration with the following conditions. One, no more than four people may occupy the rental at one time.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? I don't think so, I'll repeat that one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pensions? Okay. How about a ditto on application 2415?
I will make a motion to approve application 2415 for a tourist home located on property, on the property at 128 Road, East Granby, in the Agricultural Zoning District. In accordance with section 4A5G and the special permit consideration with the following conditions, no more than four people may occupy the rental at one time.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, your aces.
Mr. Cameron, I'll review for adjournment.
Wait, we, we do have one added agenda item. Just a receipt of application 2501, Franken and, I'm not even going to try that last name. They are the owners of Valley Fish Company, and they're looking for a text amendment in section 5A4. They have a food truck, their own food truck on their property. Now, as you were saying, John.
So, before you guys move forward, this will obviously require a public hearing, and we do have it scheduled for February, Lot 44 Seymour Road. We intentionally pushed it to our February meeting. Do you want to have two public hearing, text amendment, public hearings in February? Or do you want to push this one to March?
Can I just say thank you to everybody?
Certainly, you're welcome, you're very welcome.
Always moving so, but I thank you for all your time, and you guys volunteered to do all this, so I thank you very much, and Robin, thank you.
Welcome.
Sending you some business, too, when our kids come into town. I don't want a lighthouse.
Thank you.
Well, they're animals.
Good luck.
So, this is for that. Um, yeah, maybe we should do the second one tomorrow. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah.
So, we'll schedule this, this text amendment for our March meeting.
For the fish people?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
One other Prague cake recipe, too. Oh, they're good, depending on that.
That's a secret.
My Prague cake secret, recipe is a secret.
I would look for adjournment, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.